...University in the fall to play football. And Olivia Wilson will be going to Georgia Southern Western University. So, uh, these are our Turner County, Vincent J. Dooley nominees for the scholarship. Also, the ceremony will be May tenth at North Atlanta High School. So, uh, we're gonna support them with it. Thank you.
Now we're moving on to our Titans of the Year and our Teachers of the Year. Um, for elementary, we have Melissa Clayton, middle, Julie Elmer, high school, Amber Stevens. We'll come forward. And then for our Teachers of the Year, we have elementary, Pamela Hyatt, middle, Jennifer Purcell, and high, Mandy Cole. So we are very excited. Represent our schools. And do a tremendous job.
Alright, one, two, three. Thank you ladies.
Uh, this is Miss Olivia Wilson. Uh, she's, she will be representing Turner County Schools at, uh, the Dooley Scholarship nominee for Turner County High School.
Olivia. Olivia. I tell you, you're going to Georgia Southwestern.
Yes ma'am.
So what are you planning to do?
Um, elementary education.
Oh, well, there she is.
If I could have each one of the groups that was, uh, recognized tonight in front of the banners, could we get a photo picture?
Yeah.
And for the local estate, would you like to? There's an exciting topic.
Continue on to the proposed agenda. The council's already.
The agenda together to save the schedule for personnel. Uh, I.
Grab a four week journey. I have motion to amend the agenda tonight to add an executive session for personnel. As agenda item seven, grab a four week journey. I have motion. Second, Mr. Perry, I'll favor. We're looking at a proposed agenda called Order of Indication. The agenda is for forty. Um, this month is mental health emergency.
It is, so Smith and his firm have already been sending out regular emails supporting schools and staff with mental health resources. And, um, so that we don't worry about mental health.
We have any requests of other participants?
We do not, not at the time.
I have, yes, I have required door action, the recommendation to be presented. Have the minutes from last month for you.
We need to make sure. On call, leading, on the twenty. The, the, the names, let's see which ones, so. Seven, eight. And eight. And ten. And eleven. It was the first one.
We have another thing, eight, is it eight, ten, and eleven?
Seven, no, uh, seven is okay.
I'm watching.
Eight, I think it's eight. Uh, ten, and eleven.
Actually, again, brown, red, math is blue, yes. Thank you, Kendrick. Have the approval of the Morris, two thousand four five financial statements. Questions or comments? Followed by the approval of the SPOSS budget. And we have the approval of the new middle high budget summary. Approval of candy plant reconciliation. Followed by approval of the teach all recommendations, we're gonna discuss that in the next session. Approval of, uh, pay scales. If I have any questions or comments?
You can change six, call me, nothing's changed since the call made.
Um, they may have, you should have updated, uh, pay scales in your packet. Um, I think we just sort of fine tuned a couple of things.
The athletic supplement changes just a little bit. And then based on the recommendations, you know, there were some that were discussed about moving athletics to the clubs.
Yes.
And that was about to move.
We updated, there were a couple of, um, head coaches that were one thousand, but because our lay coaches get paid fifteen hundred, we up, upped those by five hundred dollars to make it fifteen hundred. And you can see at the bottom what the total was.
Yeah, and, and you did take away the, the totals.
The retention almost.
Yes. We tried to make it as, as convenient, but the high school, middle school on everything so that you knew which ones the assistant coaches won't make.
Any additional questions or comments? Here none. I'll favor the approval of the ESS.
That information, same information extended by potential savings for anyone that gets enrolled that's five years or less. It'd be at least ninety-two thousand dollars per year in the district. Ninety-two thousand, if we enroll people that have worked in the system, in the school system for less than five years, ninety-two thousand minimum per year if they decide to go to school system. More potentially, maybe one hundred thousand if we enroll.
I'll nominate the approval of a paid permanent purchase from Crown Court for the sequel.
We received a quote this day, uh, actually this afternoon, and based on the one percent discount, it comes to sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents. And that's actually based on the twenty-four quote that they had through to adhere to, so they're actually not trying to miss any addition, um, what we were charged the last time we ordered.
So the discount would be sixty-eight, forty-one?
Correct.
For four, fourteen years.
Because we definitely will give that to them in ten days, for some that is.
So where do we propose to put this, when it's a, which is?
Well, I was gonna say, you talked, you know, we did have a person coming in, actually start preparing the group, or give us a quote, I think that was two Fridays ago, and that person did not show. So you've got four other, I think, companies?
I've, I've been on the phone for the last few weeks trying to get folks to go and act. Some of them say it's too little for some larger ones and some smaller ones, I can't, I can't get them to come. Uh, maybe Mr. Bobby's going down there this week to, uh, patch it and do everything we can, especially on the side where the cans go to make sure that it is, is, you know, as dry as we can make it for, for the cans to go. Well, and then I'm still working on trying to get somebody in to give us a quote. But I've been try, I've been trying for several months to get people to go.
I was just wondering where, where would we put cans that, you know, when people come and get them, that you can take forward with and without, you know?
Not a good answer.
So we're still looking at it.
So is this, is this quote, is the active quote, I guess it confused us a lot.
It's gonna be the active quote, this is what they sent us this afternoon, Mr. Kendrick's been trying to get a quote from them for two weeks, and this is what they finally sent us after, and we wanted to get it in front of them, so it's considered. Yeah, it's twenty-three, where it's last year's quote, but they said that they waited for it to last year's quote, they would charge the same thing.
What happened? That was the quote they got last year, and then, then, I think they were just, just to stop it or whatever, not, not report it.
Us, usually what, what we used to do, uh, we would go ahead and get a quote, 'cause a lot of times we would get it November, I don't know when he got that one, but usually sometime so that we could have it for the next upcoming year, so if we needed to up can prices, we would know before we, 'cause all of the other candy plants bought from us, they buy their cans from us, so we would know what to charge them, 'cause if we just stay with the old price, and then we have to, prices go up to the next year, we're gonna be in a mess. So we have to, you know, look forward to what pricing is going to be, so I know that's probably where you got that quote from, and if they saved you that quote, we probably are coming to the.
Yeah, that's gonna be better.
Next is the approval of a purchase of a hundred touchscreen Chromebook from Dell Technologies.
Mister. Mister. Do you want to elaborate on the purchase of the Dell Technologies and the period of the funds?
Yes ma'am, these are, um, touchscreens for the, um, primary grades. Uh, this is more of that carryover, big carryover amount that we had last year, Title I's money, trying to get that spent up. And that's what both of these are, Title I funds.
I will favor the approval of the access for purchase from Micro Technology Consultants.
That also falls under the category, falls into that category where we're gonna use it with this.
This, Ms. Thompson, these are going to help, um, should help Wi-Fi, um, at the elementary, who is gonna go in some of those dead zones and hopefully help the Wi-Fi, um, and improve that at the elementary school over there, so that's gonna be a good purchase for them, who's staying connected to the internet over there.
Is it normal for us to have, uh, such a large amount of carryover?
No. That was due to the teachers that we lost at the middle school the year before. 'Cause I didn't have any teachers to pay for that year, due to when the cuts came through, so that money was left here. Salary is what spends that money, it takes salary, it's just spend all that money, you can't buy that stuff, spend all that money.
I'll favor the approval of the athletic college paying proposal.
This was something we discussed probably ten, eleven months ago, and so we put, Frank has been working on that, so he is actually here tonight to talk to you about his first draft, and it's pleasant.
It's a must, good evening. Uh, I'd say, this is something we, we've been working on, uh, for committee, about eight to ten people working on this. Uh, for being approached by people in the community to, to bring this back. I was told that it was here at one time to recognize former players, teams, uh, people who made significant contributions to the, to the athletic department. And I think it'll also be one of our biggest fundraisers for the athletic program. So, uh, like, like Ms. Ray said, this is just an initial draft to, to present before you and, and let you know that we are trying to get this back.
Does anybody know who has already, that's already been there?
Uh, Ms. Kendrick, I'm, I'm trying to find that information, I said, uh, this is just my fourth year here, and I've, I've been approached by people trying to get it back, so I've spoken to, uh, Peter Artis Thomas, who's been here, Mr. Christian, you know, so we trying to, we, we trying to do our research, and also when we find out who those people are, we wanna recognize them and, and give it up today.
Thank you. Have the timeline for FY twenty-six budget.
So we've obviously been in budget talks for a while now, now we're at the, the end of that process, and so, um, this one was gonna elaborate on the next steps, and we need that approved as a document in the newspaper to finalize that for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
So you should have your budget timeline in front of you, and we just threw out some tentative dates. Um, we do have to have a budget approved, a final budget approved by June thirtieth, or we will need to do a spending resolution, which is not something we, you know, if we can avoid that at all costs, we need to. Um, so we just sort of threw out some dates. Um, if we can get, um, I see the approval of the ESS and the pay scales, those are kind of holding me up with the salaries. So once I get those, one way or the other, then I can move forward with pulling the budget together, and, um, you see the dates that I've, I've Ms. Ray and I worked together to lay out, so that we can make everything work out, so that we could adopt the final budget, um, the, uh, regular meeting, regular June meeting.
Can we have the G A and T S S progress and next steps?
Cause you know, if everywhere we're selected for the multi-year system supports, basically we have a program, almost like a pilot program, as to say to Georgia, eventually everyone could be required to participate in this program. So we're ready to get in early, um, to be proactive, to go and get the supports and the resources that, that Georgia Dooley is providing to school systems now, that they will not be able to provide once everybody in the state comes on board, so Ms. Nizelle has been heading that up, so I just thought, we could pray, but she gave y'all a timeline and next steps, because this is a huge undertaking to support the instruction and the work that's going on.
So it's a three-year process. In year one, we just kicked off, and it is at the, it focuses at the district level. Um, year one is going to help us fine tune our framework, get the training that we need for the district level to be able to roll it out to the schools and fully support it within the schools as, as desired by Georgia. They are doing some changes to the NTSI RTI student support programs to kind of streamline it and make sure that we're not having a attendance meeting over here and an academic meeting over there, and a mental health meeting over here, and a behavior meeting back there. They're doing all of those centers at one table, along with leadership, to be able to really and truly fully support that child fully. Because sometimes behavior or social work things are happening on the other side that's impacting behavior and so forth. So the program itself, the support that we're gonna give is to help us identify those weak areas and how we are leading our people to them, you know, all about one child without really having all the right people at the table to make good decisions for that child and to implement what the child needs. So that is one of the things, year two, um, is when we will start rolling it out to our, for our school, which, um, has been selected for us, is going to be our middle school, because they're a TSI school. So we'll be working that first year, looking at the data, drilling down, looking at our processes, our procedures, developing that framework, and we'll start rolling it out year two, um, to the middle school, and full implementation for the middle school will be August twenty-twenty-six. That's when all of those things will go into place, the same staff and the stuff like that. Year three will be a rollout to our second school, which will be our elementary school, which serves the vast majority of our students. Um, and so we will be able to do that as well. So our next steps are we're doing some TESSY Bailey trainings to make sure that we understand what the framework is, how it should work, what should be expected, and how it should flow. Then we'll look at the NTSI angle that we have in term, that we developed a few years back, but we're gonna see how that aligns with the new trainings and things of that nature, and make changes as we think we need. And then the third thing that we're gonna be doing over the next, the course of the next month is gonna be a needs assessment, um, for our middle school to look at exactly where they are, what processes they have in place, what processes they don't have in place, and the needs of students that are in that.
The next agenda item is the discussion for the A A B basketball.
So information was requested in senior packets regarding, um, how, how the gyms, I guess, how any facilities, not just a gym, how it's rented, um, what facility forms have to be in place, what the commission steps are in order to gain that approval, and what it costs for each one of the services, um, looks. Show us the highlight areas. So these are the processes that are in place, I'll give this opportunity to its normal practice. Just to give you an example, to rent the gymnasium, um, the way it's worded on our Turner County Board of Education Facility Use Contract, this is five hundred dollars per open, as an example, that each one of the, the different areas within the schools, you have different limited liability policies, um, and usage terms. So, I think the gymnasium is the one that was specifically asked for part A.
I personally don't help follow our kids, if we, if we have, if we have them in place, and these are our children that go to Turner County Schools, if we know that this program is not monetarily draining our kids, I, I don't see why we're charging them. But, uh, you know, I thought someone would be here representing.
Um, I was not able to contact anyone. Um, I, I did check with a couple surrounding counties, um, that have these type of pro players, and they charge those teams. And what they charge, I didn't ask what they charge them, I just told them what they charge. Does it present a problem if, if all of these, if all of the athletes are not Turner County students?
I think there'll be some liability there, because what you're asking, and I think there are other students in other counties.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Ray said, our biggest concern is life building, you know, because we've had numerous incidents where we walk in gyms and kids wasn't supervised. You know, uh, coming from out of mountain, we had a kid was there before the socialization, tore his knee up, and had a five million dollar loss. You know, so, it's like I said, we don't, I agree with you, as far, we don't have a problem with our kids, but it's, it's not knowing if only these are our kids. That's, that's kind of, we, we, we won't ever know if it's just our kids then.
And I'm concerned about unsup supervision.
Yes ma'am.
Cause we've seen, we've seen in best, even best, our basketball team, purchased a new figure.
No, that's, and like I said, that's, that's why we did what we did.
The only question I have to, even concerning that is, um, who would, would, would staff member have to be there to open the gym, and then they have to have it, or stop time, for the staff member to return?
They have to be a staff member, absolutely.
They're, they're not gonna be able to afford it there. I mean, they're, they're only charging the kids to come out and play the whole season, so that's, that's gonna be contrapart, so they're not gonna be able to afford it there.
And I, and I will say that the other concern there is cleanup and, and those kind of things, the, the maintenance of the facilities that, you know, if it's not a staff member that's there supervising them, there needs to be some kind of requirement, something that, you know- There needs to be some kind of requirement, something that, you know, if something happens or, or something that they're responsible for cleanup or things of that nature. But we've had several issues in the past, of the gym being cleaned and then coming back in, and it's a mess. And, um, I know my custodian staff having to do double the work. Have these, uh, teams been allowed to practice before? Have they ever requested formally to be able to practice in our facility?
No.
Not initially.
But they have practiced here before?
Yes.
Just, just because I thought we could.
Yes, ma'am.
There was also expressed a safety concerns, um, around the, the location they're, they're practicing in. I've had, excuse me, I've had some people tell me that, um, safety isn't a concern. The person I spoke with told me that safety is a concern for multiple reasons. Information out of the board, construction update?
We've got some exciting updates, as you can see driving by. Um, and Pro is a doctor, Ray, who was recently. The kitchen equipment is now ninety percent installed. Uh, case open countertops are at ninety percent. Carpet and L V T is at eighty percent, and of course, it's solid building eleven hundred. Uh, the media center steps that are going up to the second floor have now been framed. The elevator installation will start Monday, so that, that'll be exciting to see that come in. And then, um, once the elevator gets installed, then they'll start the deficiency list to begin the punch out. For building twelve, uh, L V T is almost complete in the classrooms. The acoustical ceiling's at eighty-five percent. Door hardware are ongoing on the second floor. A hundred percent of the fire marshal inspection has been scheduled, we're just awaiting that date. That's one of the big things for the punch list. And then building thirteen hundred, um, all the epoxy flooring has been completed. Um, lights and grills are dropping in the ceiling, um, and the eighty percent of that fire marshal inspection has been scheduled. Um, and when he comes to do building eleven hundred and twelve hundred, or do thirteen hundred at that same time. Um, as you can see out here, out in front, and, um, in the main building, the curbs and the gutters are at seventy-five percent. Um, they're planning on wrapping all the ratings this week. Uh, the sole cement has been approved, and that'll start on May the twelfth. And then the punch schedule is still the original dates, June the sixth, June the twentieth, and June the twenty-seventh. And so, what's the one?
Exciting stuff.
Um, they also included in your package, just to give you an update on our T E C S and links, end of year progress. Um, we do have it for June seventh, you need, in order to do all of the sign-ons and the timelines, but we wanted you to see the progress that they made, um, the sole setting, mid-year conferences, obviously end of year conferences, um, start up soon, and how many observations have been completed with at least one or at least two, based on the percentages in that last column. Just wanted to keep you updated on the progress that's going on with that, and what we're doing within the top. I was gonna say, another exciting thing this week is gonna be our college and career cap presentation. We hope you're all able to attend. It will be Thursday, it'll be maybe eight this Thursday in Warner Robins, um, in central Georgia, College Technical Campus, um, in building W, so we'll make sure you all have the directions. Um, if you wanna get there early, um, it actually starts at ten, but we will get there before nine, so we can have one additional rehearsal. We will end up having five rehearsals total, that'll be the last thing that we get to have, obviously, before we go in front of the judges. Um, it could be anywhere from ten to fifteen judges, um, we haven't been given an exact number, so we've got the fastest prepared for that meeting. And as far as the presentation itself, it's gonna be incredible. We've got signage that's been made, um, we have our audiovisual students who we're finalizing right now as we speak, the commercials that they did pre-production, post-production, filming, and even used for last week. So the commercial, two different minute commercial will also be part of the presentation. We have twenty people who will actually be the twin that are allowed, are only allowed twin this time. And those twinning will be in the front of the room during the presentation. Um, it consists of school, community, business, two technical college presidents, um, board chair, two other superintendents. Um, so we are very excited about the number of students who are also there, able to help and participate. Um, everybody will be dressed in a brand, they will all have either their college, technical, or business attire on. All of our students will have the uniforms on that correspond with their pathway with the type mode. So, um, we are very excited about all of this coming together, it's gonna be extraordinary. You look forward to all of that. Um, next in your packets, you should have a list of upcoming events. Um, and it's all of our autumn night, banquet, graduations, um, all of the special programs, and also here to some summer school and our conference dates at the bottom. I did wanna add one day for you for this week, and that is our band concert, which we will be having tomorrow night. Um, it has been posted and been sent out, but I wanted to make sure you type that on the calendar. So that will be tomorrow night, May the sixth, at sixteen M. But, um, lots of exciting things, just wanna review our, our system right now.
That's pretty well, I'm sorry, the rest is a little... Island Baker. And Island from the desk is over here.
I completed, um, you know, that I did in the fall, I did it again in the spring. Um, I actually went in every single classroom and visited every single teacher during classroom instruction. Um, been sent follow-up emails with blows and bros to support those teachers and the work they're doing. And I could say without a shadow of a doubt, some of the teachers that I've served during fall semester have made significant improvements between their fall classroom visit and this spring classroom visit. Um, so I appreciate that it starts to rain and helping you pull those schedules together so that we can get into every single class, um, because that is a huge undertaking. But, um, but it was well worth it, and, um, I got a lot of responses back on what we saw and what they, um, were appreciative of based on the resources that we provided. So that would be ongoing. Also, in your packets, um, is a PowerPoint about the future education tax credit. Um, as we talked about before, the high school has been completed their application. And if you go on the future education tax credit website right now, you will actually see Turner County Schools and Turner County High School in the drop-down box, which is exciting. And that was no easy feat, and I think Mr. Clark could speak to that, it was a huge undertaking. So now that we have gotten the first school in, our next step would be obviously to have our elementary, little schools also land on that list, where they're also in the drop-down list, and to have each tax credit sent to them directly. Um, I wanted you to have this in case anyone in the community asks new questions about it. How do they donate, um, how do the donations work? Is there a max, you know, limit on donations per year? Um, so basically, this is just a big information packet that helps you maybe answer some questions. We'll make sure we're sharing this in the community, we're sharing this online, um, because we want people to talk to about it. Basically, all it does is it keeps the tax dollars, they're gonna have to pay anyway. It keeps them local, because it hopes of them getting sent to Atlanta with everybody else's tax money and possibly then landing on some highway or construction project, um, in Atlanta. So we want those tax dollars to stay here, and so that is our goal. So if you ever have any questions about that, or if anybody reaches out to you about donations, if you'll please just send them our way, and we'll make sure they get to the right place. I'm blessed, I'm... So our next, um, congratulations, I wish I had you introduce everybody else. But, um, you know, the manager goes significant and ends up with audits, um, every single year. This year was no different, and again, we had a completely clear audit with zero audit findings. So I appreciate everything that the finance department does, I appreciate everything that Miss Walker does to make sure that we have all of our books and records and everything in order, um, to go through this process.
Can I do a shout-out?
Sure.
Um, school nutrition got violated this year in Tiger One, so Ms. Terry was heavily involved too. Uh, and of course, H R and payroll.
Right, separate that.
Yeah, it is.
I will refer to her, I mean, back one more time, the man of the evening. And, uh, we did receive a grant for girls' flag football, but it's not just a grant. How could I do it with?
Uh, a fundation in interest about some of, uh, big young students about flag football, because a lot of the teams in our surrounding area are now playing flag football. Uh, I reached out to the Arthur Blunt Foundation in Atlanta, found this, enrolled a grant. And on April twenty-first, I received an email saying we were awarded ten thousand dollars to, to, to start this program. So before I came to the, to the board, we, we received a check, ten thousand dollars. So it's, uh, to be spread out over twelve years, and we aren't able to do it in twelve form. So we hope, hopefully we can be full-fledged, not this season coming, but the following season, so we can implement it into the program. So I thank this a tremendous honor, and hopefully we can, uh, go full-fledged. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So the superintendent's been in Dr. Kansas?
So we had our most recent meeting on April twenty-third, and again, I'm gonna be honest, we, these kids, they just never cease to amazing, they are open, they are honest, they are forthcoming, almost to the fault, because they want what's best for them, their classrooms, um, their students, their classmates, um, they want to receive the highest level of education possible, and they know they deserve it. And so that's the type of information they share, the conversations that we have. And, um, one of the things that we did say, we asked, um, them that they would be interested in, and we put this group together, was if they wanted to participate in a community service project before the end of the year, and they did. And they were very passionate about the ideas they gave me, and so we came up with nine, and we brought all the ideas together, and of those nine, they selected their top two, and their top one was going to the Senior Citizen Center, which we will do next week, so they will volunteer there. And the next one was doing staff and teacher appreciation. Uh, some of them were just over the moon excited for certain teachers, and they were like, this math department is incredible, or these science teachers are awesome, and they wanted to be able to thank them. So we'll participate in the teacher appreciation ring, activities, making sure that they know how much we appreciate them, that the kids are extraordinary, um, we have a lot of good product. And then again, just more dates, we're improving.
Congratulations, you have to take a special photo first, ladies. To both.